Good evening. As the Vice Chair of the Commission, I call this meeting of the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission to order at 6:01 PM. This Zoom webinar is being livestreamed at YouTube at the website www.youtube.com/michsosoffice/videos. For anyone in the public watching who would prefer to watch via a different platform than they are currently using, please visit our social media at @redistrictingmi to find the link for viewing on YouTube. Our livestream today includes closed captioning. Closed captioning, ASL interpretation, and Spanish and Arabic translation services will be provided for effective participation in this meeting. Email us at redistricting@michigan.gov for additional viewing options or details on accessing language translation services for this meeting. People with disabilities needing other specific accommodations should also contact redistricting@michigan.gov. This meeting is being recorded and will be available at www.michigan.gov/micrc for viewing at a later date. This meeting is also being transcribed, and those transcriptions will be made available and posted on michigan.gov/micrc along with written public comment submissions. There is also a public comment portal that may be accessed by visiting michigan.gov/micrc. This portal can also be utilized to post maps and comments which can be viewed by the public. Members of the media who may have questions before, during, or after this meeting should direct those questions to Edward Woods III, Communications Director for the Commission, at woods-e3@michigan.gov or 517-331-6309. For purposes of the public record, for the public watching and public record, I will turn to the Department of State staff to take note of the Commissioners' presence.
Good evening. Commissioners, please say "present" when I call your name. If you are attending the meeting remotely, please announce during roll call that you are attending the meeting remotely. And unless your absence is due to military duty, announce your physical location by stating the county, city, township, or village and the state from which you are attending the meeting remotely. Douglas Clark.
Present. I'm attending the meeting remotely from Rochester Hills, Michigan.
Juanita Curry.
Present.
Anthony Ead.
Present.
Brittany Kellum. Rhonda Lang.
Present, attending remotely from Reed City, Michigan.
Stephen Lett.
Present.
Cynthia Orton.
Present.
MC Rothhorn.
Present.
Rebecca Zatella.
Present.
Janice Falette.
Present.
Erin Wagner.
Present, attending remotely from Charlotte, Michigan.
Richard Weiss.
Present.
Dustin Witches.
Present.
Twelve Commissioners are present, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Mr. Lett so that he can give us an introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, my name is Stephen Lett, and I would like to welcome you to the MICRC Public Hearing in Marquette, Michigan. Very happy that you are here and hope that you will learn about Michigan's new redistricting process and how you can engage throughout this process to ensure that your voice is heard. In looking at the agenda, please note that the vast majority of our time this evening is spent listening to you. We are eager to hear from your ideas either in person or remotely about drawing Michigan's congressional, House, and Senate districts. In addition to hearing about the district lines, we will also want to hear your ideas about communities of interest. In 2018, more than 61% of the Michigan voters intentionally and deliberately passed Proposal Two, a ballot initiative for voters, not legislatures, to take responsibility for map fairness and public feedback in the redistricting process, and created the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, the MICRC. For the first time in Michigan's history, the MICRC will lead the redistricting process to draw fair and independent maps, comprised of 13 randomly selected Michigan residents, that includes four who affiliate as Democrats, five who affiliate as independents, and four who affiliate as Republicans through a lottery run by the Michigan Department of State. The MICRC has the exclusive authority in this new redistricting process for Michigan's congressional, House, and Senate districts. As fellow residents, the MICRC understands your expectations to draw maps in an open and transparent manner that meets the constitutional mandates. Our mission and vision exemplifies our resolve, not just for today, but for future generations as well. In your interaction with the MICRC and its staff, you should witness the core values of integrity, respect, transparency, and being purposeful. Once again, we are glad that you are here, and we look forward to hearing from you. As a kind of a new part, I'm going to ask each Commissioner to identify themselves and where they're from. They've already said they're here, so we know that much, and we'll also ask that of the virtual people at the end. So if we'll start down here with Juanita, if you would turn your mic on and tell us who you are and where you're from.
My name is Juanita Curry, and I am remotely from Detroit, Michigan.
Oh, she's not remote, she's here.
I mean, I'm from Detroit. Excuse me.
My name is Dustin Witches. I am from Ypsilanti, Michigan.
Good evening. My name is MC. I'm from Lansing, Michigan.
I'm Janice Falette. I'm from Highland, Michigan.
I'm Cynthia Orton from Battle Creek, Michigan.
Good evening. My name is Richard H. Weiss, and I'm from Saginaw, Michigan.
Once again, I'm Stephen T. Lett, and I am from Interlochen, Michigan.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Zatella, and I am from Wayne County, Michigan.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. I'm Anthony Ead, and I'm from Orchard Lake, Michigan.
Just so you all don't feel left out, Doug?
Yeah, I'm Douglas Clark, and I'm from Rochester Hills, Michigan.
Rhonda?
Rhonda Lang from Reed City, Michigan.
And Erin?
Hello, I'm Erin Wagner, and I'm from Charlotte, Michigan.
And those are the Commissioners and who they are and where they're from. The one that is missing this evening for a reason that she couldn't be here, it's unavoidable, is Brittany Kellum, and she is from the Detroit area. With that, I will turn it over to our Executive Director, Sue Hammersmith.
Good evening, everyone. We're really glad you're here this evening to share with the Commission. I want to talk a little bit about the public hearing. So before the Commissioners can draw a single line, they are required by the Constitution to hold at least 10 public hearings. Our Commissioners are overachievers. They're on the road for 16 public hearings. To listen to the residents of Michigan, thank you. We really want to listen to the people here in Michigan. We want to hear from you and gather your input. There are three purposes according to the Constitution for the public hearings. First of all, to inform the public about the redistricting process. Second, to share the purpose and responsibilities of the Commission. And third, and most importantly, to solicit information from the public about potential redistricting plans. So what is redistricting? Every 10 years, the lines are redrawn for the 13 Michigan congressional, 38 Michigan senate, and 110 Michigan House seats. So the job of this Commission is to redraw those lines in a fair process, and that will be the redistricting process. The Commission's purpose and responsibilities include exercising their constitutional powers granted solely to them to redistrict Michigan, operating in an impartial and transparent manner that reinforces public confidence in the integrity of the redistricting process, conducting statewide public outreach and inviting meaningful public participation, adopting the three maps that were mentioned for each type of district while complying with the U.S. and Michigan congressional mandates, and ensuring integrity, public availability, and accountability for data, public comments, and Commission information, all the while assuring compliance with the redistricting criteria. There are seven criteria in the Constitution. They are in rank order. So first, we must meet federal law, and that includes equal population and adhering to the Voting Rights Act. The districts must be geographically contiguous. They must touch each other, single line. Communities of interest are taken into consideration, so we want to hear about the groups with which you affiliate and who it's important for you to vote with. The fourth and fifth criteria are in regards to politics. There cannot be a disproportionate advantage given to any political party, and the Commission is not allowed to favor or disfavor an incumbent elected official or candidate. The sixth criteria is reflecting city, county, and township boundaries. And lastly, the districts must be reasonably compact. So it's a pretty tall order, but the Commissioners work hard, and they're up to the task. So why are we here? To hear directly from you about your ideas to redistrict Michigan's congressional, House, and senate seats, and to listen and to hear about your community of interest. And why should you care? This is a historic process. This is the very first time the lines have been drawn by citizens just like you. This is an open and transparent process with opportunity for statewide participation, and we invite communities of interest to share their voices for how they can best be represented. So again, thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing with the Commission.
Excuse me. I will now turn it over to our General Counsel, Julianne Pestula.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you so much to the community for welcoming us to your beautiful area. The public comment guidelines that I would like to share with you is that including both in-person and remote public comments, so people can participate not only in this room, but also over the telephone or virtually over the Internet. Our public comments this evening will run two minutes for both in-person and remote, equal time. There is a timer, and the front of the room, a countdown timer, and you will hear when that timer expires. There will be an audible alarm that I will use on my phone. I will have the sound here for you. The in-person public comments will take place first, followed by our remote public comments. And again, we encourage everyone providing public comment this evening to please visit our website at www.michigan.gov/micrc and log your public comment into our public comment portal for the benefit of not only the Commission, but the public at large. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julianne. We will now begin the public comment portion of the meeting. Individuals who have signed up and indicated that they would like to provide in-person commentary to the Commission will now be allowed to do so. I will take numbers one through four to step up to the microphone. You have two minutes to address the Commission. Please conclude your remarks when you hear the timer. First in line to provide public comment will be number one. Go ahead, number one.
Hello. My name is James Gallant with the Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition, and my community of interest is the entire state of Michigan because I am concerned with the rules of procedure, the way that this Commission is the decision-making process, and the Roberts Rules of Order, which is approved in your bylaws. And now, it is my personal opinion based on the facts, which is the published minutes and the public transcripts, that this Commission has appeared to have omitted the Secretary of State's precedence of rules of procedure that were established by the Secretary of State at the first meeting, when she presided over the meeting. She established the rules that said there would be two public comments at every meeting, and that there would be 90 seconds each. And then, and then she proceeded to do that, and by unanimous consent, hearing no objections, it was then ruled that these were the rules before you approved your bylaws. So this is the precedence of the rules of procedure. They were included in your current bylaws and your current rules of procedure. So I would ask you to have a public hearing, have a special meeting, public hearing concerning the bylaws, Roberts Rules of Order. There has been slanderous statements submitted to the record concerning Roberts Rules of Order. That's not how it works. Roberts Rules of Order, oh, we've got the book right there. It's my understanding that this Commission does not own a copy of the Roberts Rules of Order, the rulebook. So how can you ensure that you're following the rules if you don't have a copy of the rulebook? The Suicide Prevention Commission of Marquette County would like to donate a copy for future generations of the book to this Commission. I would recommend that the Secretary of State would get a subscription from the Roberts Rules of Foundation, and then everybody would be able to get that online on your tablets, and you would then have the rules beside you. And, but, problem happened when it was 90 seconds. That's the rule. That was, and that's on October 1st. October 17th, you made a decision outside, it was not a majority vote at a public meeting. October 1st, it was 90 seconds. All of a sudden, the public notice, it's not in the minutes, it's in the public notice. October 17th, all of a sudden, it's two minutes. Nobody voted on it. Nobody voted on it. That's a violation of the Meetings Act, and I would ask that you will get a more, bigger, better report on Thursday. I would expect you to address this at your Thursday business meeting this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Number two, you can submit your comment to the Commission.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the Commissioners that went on WNMU-TV 13 Sunday to address the questions. There's a lot of Q and A between Andrew LaCombe and the Commissioners. You very much answered the questions very, very good. But one of the reasons why I wanted to show up here, because we've been waiting for years to see this happen face-to-face. So we're very, very happy to see that you're going to be taking all of our input, the redistricting, where I was going to address my concerns and thoughts. I have a friend here, Gene, that just came back from vacation, and he's loaded with very, very top information. So I'll let him do that part of the talk that I was going to present. There were several other questions, but talking to different people, they had the same thought and concern, so I wanted to also give them a chance. So my time here is, I just wanted to thank everybody that's involved with this redistricting. And I know a lot of times that you're going to have people that are for you and against you, but, you know, as far as politics, we're used to that. But anyways, one of the things I want yous to do is listen carefully, and you'll get some very, very excellent input with thoughts and concerns from everybody. So with that, I'm going to clear the floor with 10 seconds left. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for addressing the Commission. Number three, you are now invited to address the Commission.
Thank you to all of you here tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to address everyone. I am a lifelong Uper. Up until the last two years, I did move to Lansing, Michigan, but I felt the opportunity here tonight to address all of you in Marquette, which is where I lived for the last three years. And also, I was born and raised in a mountain. This is too good to pass up, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you tonight. I would like to address a couple of things, and really important is the 109th House District. I believe the most appropriate measure for you to take would be to keep Berga, Marquette, and Eldrick County as one unit. And the reason for that is for a lot of different reasons. I've worked with labor, I've worked with different economic interests, and in terms of our economic impact in that, those counties as a whole would be the Northern Lake Superior shoreline, which shares many economic conditions together. Shipping, we ship heavy minerals such as iron ore. We have tourism and healthcare interests. We also have the Tilda Mine, Ishoming to Nagani mining towns, all these economic interests as a whole. It makes sense to keep us compact and to have one representative speaking for one interest in those areas. Secondly, we have community connections. We have M95, and we have M94, which connect Eldrick, Marquette, and Berga. From the east to the west, these connections via transportation, north to south, are not as easily reached and aren't as direct. So we also have the Land Lance Indian Reservation, which is primarily based in Barack County. To the west, it has a small portion within Chocalee Township. These are just a few of many reasons why it makes sense to keep these counties together when it comes to districting the House seats of the 109th District. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the Commission. Number four, you may now address the Commission.
Thank you very much. My name's Josh. Glad I can take your time, and thanks for coming up here in person. It's nice to see everybody. This is... This is going to be something new for me, but I just want to say to all you that I am here to speak in behalf of Marquette County. I've been in the UP for 30 years now, been in Marquette County for 10. I think the best thing for our area is to keep Marquette, Berga, and Eldrick County together. Like Katie said, we share the Lake Superior shoreline along with tourism that comes with this area, mining, and just everything. We're compact and together here, so that's the biggest reason for me, and I'm not going to take all the time tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you for addressing the Commission. I would like to remind everybody who's commenting tonight to please also go to the public comment tool and share your comments in writing, including any specific area of the map about which you are speaking. The tool is available at michigan.gov/micrc. I now invite numbers five through eight to approach the microphone, and number five, if you are ready, you can go ahead and begin.
Thank you for serving. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the UP and especially Marquette County. My name is Gene Champagne. I live in the small village of Big Bay, which is about 30 miles northwest of Marquette. That's in Powell Township, and it's in Marquette County. Two minutes isn't enough. I would like to see you go to five, although I'm sure you have more, heavily more populated meetings. Anyhow, I will not get through everything I need to say. I'll submit more in comments, or possibly when everyone's done, I'll go back to this. But my reason for being here is I live in Marquette County, and since 2002, the people of Powell Township have voted with the 110th District, which is the Western UP. So since that time, our House Representatives have come from Bessemer, Calumet, Hancock, and South Range, an Atlantic mine, which, if you're familiar with the UP, it's a three- to four-hour drive from them to us and us to them. We never see them. It doesn't matter whether they're Republican, Democrat, good or bad. We are not fairly represented with that situation. Powell Township and Ishoming Township are the two townships in Marquette County that vote with the 110th. Berga County is the closest county. Only six miles of Powell Township touches Berga County, and that's in the upper northwest corner where no one lives. The whole population of Powell, which is a large township, is on the east end in Big Bay and Lake Superior. and Lake Superior. Powell Township shares the only paved road into and out of our township with Marquette Township in the city of Marquette. Driving the seventy miles of paved road to get to Berga County, that's on the outskirts, eastern outskirts of the Hundred and Tenth District, we must pass through seven other county townships in the cities of Marquette, Nagani, and Ishpeming. It is ninety-six miles to Lance, the closest large town in the county. Seaton, Berga County has a population of two thousand. Our State House Representatives already mentioned it. Mentioned that. High school students at Powell Township attend school either in Marquette or Nagani, primarily Nagani, but also Marquette and schools of choice. Time's up. I will try and get back with this, and I will submit maps and written comments later. Two minutes.
Thank you very much. Number five, you may address the commission. Oh, I'm sorry, number six. Sorry.
I'll look at it, but I don't think so. My name's Carla. I live in Powell Township. First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. We worked hard to get the Citizens Redistricting Commission passed. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to talk about my community of interest, which is right here, right now. I know Gene started on it, but we live in Big Bay. It's one road between Big Bay and Marquette. Everything we do is in Marquette. Our doctors, our banks, our shopping, everything is in Marquette. We should be voting with them. That is our community of interest. So when you look at the maps for the Hundredth and Ninth District, please keep that in mind. Look at where we are and see that we really, this is our community of interest right here. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Number seven, you may now address the commission.
Hi, my name's Mary Ellen. I too am from Powell Township. Same going on here. Powell Township is the largest township in the largest county in Michigan. We have eight hundred and eighteen residents. It's our landmass that is big, and we are cut off from the rest of the county in representation. As precinct chair of our voting district for the past three years in Powell, except for this last election, it is hard to explain as voters come in and say, well, my candidate isn't on the list. And I go, no, we're not in the Hundred and Ninth. We're in the Hundred and Tenth. And it is an ongoing issue of, as Carla had said, with our road into town. Our Powell Township slogan is "At the End of the Road Where Your Adventure Begins." And it truly is. It is the only paved road into the whole community. There are about between three hundred and four hundred voters in the community, and we are seriously underrepresented in Marquette County because of our districting. So I ask you to take a look at it. Thank you for being here, and I thank you for the opportunity of you guys coming up from downstate to the better part of the state.
Thank you for your comments to the commission. Number eight, you may now address the commission.
My name is Jill Margenimi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. I'm glad that we have a representation that's fair. There's a certain amount of people from different political parties. It sounds like you formed the commission wisely. I'm a former resource specialist for special ed from California. I've lived in Marquette, Michigan for eleven years. My husband was born here. We've come back. We've all retired. I feel that the fair thing to do is like what they've been talking about with the different counties, is to consider the population and the fact that they're in rural areas, that in order to get to voting, they have to come into our areas. Okay? I think our founding fathers wanted it that way. You take Detroit area, you've got probably all kinds of districts there. Here we have the Hundred and Ninth, and we are working hard together to stay together, and I really mean that, even in a political way. We're trying to see that the laws are fair and just for everyone here. Okay? And I'm talking specifically for eleven years. I served on a committee like you in California. I would have served had I been, not realized that no one here is represented from the UP. And I don't know how you feel out here, but I don't feel that this commission should continue working without somebody from the UP, and I would like to advise that somebody step forward, and if no one will step forward, then I will. I heard about this. I just thought with having a grandchild born last year and my oldest daughter getting married, that I couldn't do it. But in order to make it fair, I think we need to base it partly on population and not just on industry. I would hope that you would consider dividing the lines along county lines and keeping the UP together as it is today. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Number nine, number ten, number eleven, and number twelve, you can step forward. And then, number nine, if you're ready, you can go ahead and address the commission.
Hello, I'm Wendy Irish from Eunising, which is in beautiful Eldrick County, and welcome to the Upper Peninsula. It's nice to see all of you face-to-face. I've been following your Zoom meetings. And one thing I have to say, I work very hard on getting Prop Two passed, and I love the way it's playing out. The meetings have such an egalitarian, democratic feel to them, which I really like. My comment has to do with public commenting. I have gone to the public comment portal, and they only ask for comments, but I have a question. I've emailed this question, and I haven't gotten a response. I attend your three-hour meetings almost every week, but there's still questions I have that I need to have answered, and maybe I'm not seeing where those answers are. My particular question has to do with where does Secretary Benson's request for relief stand? Or how can I find that out? And then also, whether or not that's granted? What is the timeline for us being able to have these districts in place for the next election? I don't know where to find answers to those questions without going back and listening to your three-hour meetings again. So if you could figure out a way, please, to answer people's questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have number ten? Okay, number eleven, you can go ahead if you're ready.
Thank you. I'm Jane Ryan, and I've lived here fifty years, coming from the East Lansing, Lansing area. My husband and I always said it was the second-best decision we ever made in our lives. We've loved the Upper Peninsula. First point was, of course, getting together. But I picked up on what one of the other women said. We are very disappointed that nobody was selected from the Upper Peninsula. I've been involved with the League of Women Voters and the group. The leadership there has done a wonderful job of educating people in the UP about this process and encouraging people to apply. And I heard one rationalization that because of our small population, it wouldn't have been proportional. On the other hand, we are unique, and we do get left off the maps sometime. If we don't have somebody down there thinking about the Upper Peninsula in a friendly way. So I hope a few of you will take us on as somebody, as an area, as a region, that you care about. And we also have a significantly diverse population in terms of Native Americans and others who are students, and that would be another reason. I would hope there'd be somebody there particularly relating to some of the issues that concern them about being well-represented in our governmental process. We admire the work that you've done and that you're doing and that you came up here, but we really, really hope that you will keep the Upper Peninsula in your hearts and minds, and maybe come back and visit and spend some money. As a tourist area, we have suffered, although we are very aware that we're not the only ones doing that, but we're so proud of the things we offer, even in the winter. The winter sports and offerings are wonderful also. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Number twelve, you can proceed.
Yeah, Bert Basin, and I am from Berga County. And I got three, three things I'd like to say. First off, I agree one hundred percent. We should have someone from the UP, if at all possible. We are unique in the Upper Peninsula. It is a different place. Let's call it Citizens Redistricting Committee. And you're taking comments from anybody that shows up or anybody that goes on. There's nothing to stop anybody from making comments here. So my friends down in Florida could comment. California could comment. It's all optional, who you are. So I think there ought to be some way of making sure that the people that count, that you guys count, are Michigan residents. That has to occur. The other thing, in the UP with COVID, we've had an explosion of real estate sales. People are moving here. People are coming here like they haven't come in a long, long time. And I just wonder, in this setting up of the map, how you can account for that? I mean, the demographics are changing quickly, so that's another thing to consider. And then, I hear the 109, 110 debate, and I can understand that debate and what they're talking about. But right now, though, the 109 has about seven thousand more people than the 110. So I think Berga County should be kept separate. You know, there may be some juggling that goes on on the map. I haven't looked at the map closely, but there may be some juggling to keep these districts similar in size. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments to the commission. I'd again like to remind everybody to please use our public comment tool and share your comments in writing, including specific areas on maps of which you are speaking. The tool is available at michigan.gov/micrc. I would now like to welcome numbers thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen up to the microphone. And number thirteen, when you arrive, you're free to go ahead and start speaking.
Hello. Hi, my name's John Brahms. I'm from here in the city of Marquette. I was going to make a very brief comment to saying that I think we're all going to be looking forward to a process where the voters can choose their representatives rather than the representatives choosing their voters. So I hope that'll be something that'll go forward, and people have, you know, better representation in the future. That's all I have. It's very brief. Thanks.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Number fourteen.
Hello, my name is Christina Sarrazin, and I am from Otten County. I am coming before the commission. I want to thank you guys for taking on this challenge. This is a big challenge. You're not going to make everybody happy, but hopefully you'll be able to make most people happy in this big endeavor that you have. I have been a Uper, born and bred in the Kibbenup Peninsula my entire life, until two years ago, when I had a job opportunity I couldn't resist. So I live downstate, and I also live in the UP. And I travel the entire state of Michigan, and I set up a lot of different events in the Michigan House, Senate, and congressional districts. And I'm asking that fair lines be drawn, more compact lines. You have a very large charge in front of you to look at. And keeping the communities fair and close together is a very big thing, I think. When you are downstate in some of the areas and you're working on an event, and some people on the same street are in the same district, but you've got to drive, you know, six miles over to catch the rest of the people in your district, that's very disheartening to be able to do and to be able to keep people together in their areas and communities of interest. In the UP communities of interest, a lot of people are, this Lake Superior shoreline and the Michigan shoreline and the Wisconsin border are areas of community of interest. I think you have a very tall order ahead of you guys. And being fair and making our representatives go out and actually talk to people in their districts and learn their people and what their people need is very, is very beneficial and important. And that's something that these new lines can definitely put in place and help people be represented again, not just by party. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Number fifteen, you can step forward and address the commission when you're ready.
So I'm Lucy Wilcox, and I live in Powell Township. And I moved there six years ago to live with my husband, who's been affiliated with that area since he was born. So I'm a mongrel. I came late to this, and I want to thank y'all. I grew up in a big and lived a big, big cities, big places. And what I know is you did do a random poll to find all of you, and everybody who had their name in the hat, you know, had the same chance. And I'm okay with that, as long as you understand that I lived in Marquette for like thirteen years, and I moved to Powell Township to live with my husband. I'm so excited to go and vote for Sarah Cambizi. It was just so wonderful. Ah, I got there, no, no. I had to vote in this other district with this man who'd not been present in our area like people told me for like forever. So please, Powell Township belongs in Marquette County. That's where, as people here have pointed out, that's, you know, we have to go home to Marquette, or we go to Marquette, and then we get to come home. But we really do not belong with the Western UP hundreds of miles away with a representative who, I don't know that anybody's seen them, but maybe they have. That's all.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Number sixteen, you may go ahead when you're ready.
So my name is Ruth Zeal, and I actually live in Chocley Township, so part of Marquette County. And I have, I became aware of the issues with Powell Township and Ishpeming Township not being able to vote with the Hundred and Ninth when I was canvassing for proposal two. I look at community as where you live, where your children go to school, where you shop, where you go and see your physicians, where your friends are. And there is no reason in the world why Ishpeming Township and Powell Township should not be voting with the Hundred and Ninth. And I would really like you to try and make that happen. Most of the residents are, no, I can't say that. Many of the people I talk to think they are in the Hundred and Ninth, living in those districts, and realizing that they're not. They've spent their time looking at candidates for the Hundred and Ninth, only to discover they can't vote for any of them. So please rectify that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments to the commission. I would now have numbers seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, please approach the microphone. And number seventeen, you can begin speaking when you are ready.
Hi, my name is Kaisa Mackey, and I am a fifth-generation Marquette resident. My family, my ancestors were pioneers of both Marquette, Chocley, and Powell Township. I'm also a trained sociologist. I like to think I have like my finger on the pulse of the culture of the UP. As many people have said, the idea of Powell Township and Ishpeming Township being part of another district is crazy. A lot's been said about Powell, so I'll talk a little bit more about Ishpeming Township and Ishpeming. Not only do these people share a culture and a community and go to the same schools, they all work at the same place, pretty much. They all work in the mining industry. I mean, I don't know what the exact percentage of it is, but I worked at the mines myself, and can tell you every, just about every person I was in the lunchroom with was from Ishpeming or Ishpeming Township. I'd like to also reiterate the points about the east-west highways in the UP and how the community's interests form along east-west lines. So the Lake Superior shoreline is like kind of one community. The Wisconsin border is kind of one community, and the Lake Michigan border is kind of one community, and that's the way people travel and shop and go to the doctors and such. There are school districts. There are school districts between Marquette Eldur. There are school districts, Republic Mishigami, that cross the Baraga-Marquette border. And as was already mentioned, the Native American community that is in both Baraga and Chocley Township. So I would also advocate for Baraga-Marquette Eldur to be one block as much as possible within the population constraints, that we have more in common on the Lake Superior shoreline with Baraga than we do with Schoolcraft at the moment. But as everybody said, the Powell Township, Ishping Township thing was clearly gerrymandered and needs to be corrected.
Thank you for your comments to the commission. Number 18, you may now approach the microphone and speak when you are ready.
My name is Scott Manila and I was born and raised in Ishping. So I, and I also, I do work at the Tullamine and I talk with other people from there. And I support that we do put the 109 in West Ishping, which is Ishping Township. It's crazy that you travel from Ishping, you travel three miles. You go from one district to another district, back into the other district. So yes, I do support the fair district. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Number 19, you can go ahead and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Ryan Stern. I live in Marquette County. I would like to thank all of you for making your way up to the UP and hearing all of the UP residents. This is a big thing for us. And I urge the commission to fulfill its duties in good faith to meet the ultimate goal of determining fair deserting for the state legislature and US congressional districts. Free and fair elections are the cornerstone of a healthy democracy. And redistricting all of Michigan accurately to best represent its constituents, communities will allow our great state to truly represent the will of its people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments to the commission. Number 20.
James Bauer, Ishping, Michigan. I'm originally from Ann Arbor. I, one of the things about this commission is to end the gerrymandering. One of the fine benefits we have with that gerrymandering is the emergency manager's law. I didn't like it then. I voted to repeal it. The Republicans shoved it right through again. I want my vote to count. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Again, I'd like to remind everybody to please go to the public comment tool and share your comments in writing, including any specific areas on the map which you are speaking. The tool is available at michigan.gov/micrc. I just wanted to see if number 10 is available now or they might have left. But I just want to give them another chance to speak if they're interested. And then I would also call numbers 21 and 22. You may approach the microphone and speak when you are ready.
My name is Bob Myers. I don't have a comment actually or any recommendation about what you should do. The thing that I'm concerned about is what you mean by communities of interest. Now, when we've been talking here, it seems as if that depends on the, where you live, what you're, things like that. But I can see downstate that we have to worry about drawing lines in Detroit, other populated areas, that the idea of community of interest could be a real serious concern. Because what constitutes a community of interest? Have you discussed what this means? Is it possible to give a definition? There have been other commissions in other states like California that have a nonpartisan committee drawing district lines. They also have to cope with what you mean by community of interest. And if you are not clear about what this could mean, I can imagine that there would be lawsuits that would challenge the lines that are drawn, especially if you use community of interest as one of the areas that you're using to make the laws. So, so my only comment is, I hope that you have a clear idea of what you mean by community of interest. We don't want this to be like modern art. I know, I know what art is. I just can't tell you. Well, we don't want community of interest to be that way. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Number 22, you may approach the microphone. She come over to this one so she can wipe it off for you. Thank you.
Good evening and thanks for coming to the UP. My name is Carol Viede Moore. I'm a retiree of the market area public schools and I'm here representing the MEA. I'm also currently a real estate broker in the city of Marquette. I have lived here for about 52 years, although I did live away for a little bit. I would like to consider you to, I would like for you to consider making the district lines by way of counties. If you did the counties, you would, all the complaints I've heard tonight with Big Bay and Ishping, you would alleviate all that by putting Marquette County together. We are unique up here in the UP. And we like to, we like people to realize that and to take and to consider that when they are doing district lines like this one. I would also like to say that I think you're using the 2020 census, which was done during a pandemic, and it's already obsolete. And the reason that it's obsolete, as a real estate broker, I can tell you that people are moving into the area at a record pace. And the reason is, is they can live and work where they want to today because they've learned that during the pandemic, that by way of doing technology, they can live wherever they want and still work for the same company. So I'd like you to keep that in mind as you're redrawing your district lines. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for addressing the commission. Again, I know you guys are probably sick of hearing me say this, but I want to remind everybody to go to the public comment tool and share your comments in writing, including any specific areas of the map of which you are speaking. The tool is available at michigan.gov/micrc. So we've been going for about an hour now, so I'm going to suggest that we take about a 15-minute break so everyone can get up, stretch their legs, and then we will see where we are at then. So the current time is 6:53. Let's come back at, we'll say 7:10. Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
could return, we are ready to restart. All right, we are going to restart. It is 7:13. I believe we have one more person who is planning on making a public comment, number 23. So you can step up to the mic and go ahead with your comments to the commission.
Good evening. I'm Jim Nan-Kurvis, Ish Marine Township Supervisor. I agree with everybody from Powell Township that everybody in Marquette County should be in one district. It makes it very difficult. I'm also the president of the Marquette County Township Association. So when we try to have a meeting and try to get a hold of our state representatives, to try to get a hold of two different ones to be able to be there at the same time makes it very difficult. So usually end up with one at a time and stuff like that. So it would make everything easier in our district if all of Marquette County was in one district. That's, thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. I believe we have completed, gone through the list of everybody who is interested in in-person public comments. So at this point, we will move on to remote public comment. Individuals who have signed up and indicated that they would like to provide live remote public commentary to the commission will now be allowed to do so. I will call your name and our staff will unmute you. If you are on a computer, you will be prompted by the Zoom app to unmute your microphone and speak. If you are on the phone, a voice will say that the host would like you to speak and prompt you to press star six to unmute. I will call on you by your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Also, please note that if you experience technical or audio issues, or we do not hear from you for three to five seconds, we will move on to the next person in line and then return to you when they are done speaking. If your audio still does not work, you can email redistricting@michigan.gov and we will help you troubleshoot so that you can participate during the next public comment period at a later hearing or meeting. I believe we have one person in line to provide public comment today, and that is Victoria Dinkin. So if you would allow for a moment for staff to unmute you.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to pass. I've already had my statements made by some other individuals and I just support their statements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for addressing the commission. All right. All right, at this point, I would entertain a motion to to have a recess in the proceedings. I motion that we recess until 7:45 for the record.
I second.
Commissioner Cynthia Orton motions to recess until 7:45. And who seconded? Dustin Witches seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand as so indicate. And the people who are remote, please raise your hand as well so we can see. All in favor of adjourning for a recess or holding a recess until 7:45? All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are now in recess until 7:45. Thank you very much.
...
Comments tonight, and they were wonderful comments, and especially about the big Bay Area, Ishfoming Township. I did just a little bit of research before coming here, but unfortunately, not as much as I would like to have. So I do feel the need to make some comment that I hope isn't superfluous or repetitious. But I do agree with the people from Ishfoming Township, Powell Township, about the maps that I saw before I came here today. The one thing that I did take a little bit of time to do was to read everybody's biography online, and I'm afraid it didn't give me a whole lot of information, and that's probably the biggest reason why I'm here tonight. I am a retired civil engineer, was a county engineer for Marquette County for many years, plus an environmental specialist. So I have a lot of background in mapping, math, statistics, land use, planning and development. What I didn't see in any of the resumes was any kind of experience along that line, nor any GIS mapping or anything. So I assume that you're going to have to be hiring out a lot of the analysis of the entire state. And so because most people spoke to the regional areas, I do need to address about the state as a whole. I guess I should preface in saying that I know what a thankless job is, and I know that's what you've taken on. So I want to thank you so much for that, because even with my experience, I can't even imagine what you're going through to try to analyze everything. It seems to me that, I don't know if you have plans to contract out work on gathering all the information you need and analyzing it, you know, I would imagine you need specialists in GIS, information systems, et cetera. And so I guess, is that my time up?
Yes, you can just finish your comments.
I guess the main thing is, is that I'm looking to see something that's really transparent, but also scientific and analytical. And so that, you know, you guys are a bipartisan and nonpartisan group. And so I would hope that you correctly assess who you have doing all this work to make sure that they are equally bipartisan and independent, et cetera, because we need to see representation in Lansing that accurately, fairly, and balanced, proportionate to how people vote, so that you don't have an excess of Republicans or an excess of Democrats according to our population. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the Commission, number 25. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Croupy. I also live in Marquette. I've lived up here since 1995. Used to work at the National Weather Service Office out there in the Gondi Township and all. I retired in 2017. I should hardly leave, four years, May 25th is my retirement today. I want to thank this Commission. Actually, I really want to thank the people in Michigan who decided that to move into the independent redistributing, redistricting of voting, deciding who's going to, how the voting districts are going to be mapped out and all. I think that's key to the future of our democracy in this country, to make sure that neither Republicans nor Democrats are the ones that are drawing up the voting district boundaries and all. We have to make sure that some of these really weird-looking districts I've seen around the country and places in all the voting districts, how they've been drawn, just so they can maximize the number of one party or another that gets elected into office. We need to make sure that that does not happen in Michigan. And I really think that the state has moved in the right direction with that constitutional amendment to make the process of drawing these voting boundaries, the voting district boundaries, a bipartisan issue and all. So I really appreciate the work that you all are doing here to making sure that the voting boundaries are drawn so that neither party is automatically benefited by those redrawn of the boundaries and all. I really appreciate that and all. And I think it's very, again, vital to the success of our democracy that we move in this direction in the state. So that's really all I had to say and all. And I thank you for all your good work on that, and thank you very much.
Thank you for addressing the Commission. We will now turn to MC Rothard, who has a presentation for us this evening.
Really want to reflect back that we feel welcome. Thank you. It's really, real pleasure to be with you all, and thanks for sticking around tonight. I'm going to try to, oh, I think, I think I'm in the center there. Yep, okay, great. So this is, this is a presentation, more or less, that helps understand more about the Citizens Redistricting Commission and why we're, why we're doing what we're doing. And yeah, like you said, the foundational democracy, democratic work that we're doing. So I serve as a member, as you all know, and the, yeah, we're just, like I said, really grateful that you all are treating us the way you're, yeah, we feel really warmly received. So 2018, that's when many of you, you've mentioned how you worked for this proposal that was passed with about 20, 61% of the vote. And it was ballot, on the ballot was proposal two, voters, not legislators, or, yeah, voters and not politicians, take responsibility for nonpartisan redistricting, and created this MICRC. We are 13 randomly selected. Unfortunately, we can't, you know, just select from the UP. It's, we randomly selected from Democrats, we randomly selected from Republicans, we randomly selected independents, and that was the, that was the division. And so we now have the 13 of us, and we're going to be drawing three maps, as Ben said. So these public hearings, right, are designed to be the transparent and fair process that will create these, these maps. So the process is what we're doing today, right? And so these impartial maps, we're required to solicit the input that you all have given. And yeah, we've got, let's see, I think we've got these three purposes behind these public hearings. The Constitution gives us the criteria that we're going to be using, and you all have heard that tonight already. But we do want to inform, right, all of you, and we hope that you will actually help others hear more about our public hearing. This is not the end of what we would like to hear from the UP. This is just the one time we're here in the UP, but that doesn't mean that we want you to stop commenting or sharing with your neighbors and friends, frankly, and relatives in the UP. We'd like to hear and continue to hear more, because we want you all to go out from here and share more about this redistricting process. And we want the purpose and responsibilities of the Commission. We'd like, we'd like you to share that, that we want to draw these three maps, that's our purpose, and we want to do it in a fair and transparent manner. And then finally, we hope that you'll also help us direct people to the public comment tool, so that we can get that information in a, in a, direct from their mouths, and frankly, from their fingers on the keyboard, right? So we, we kicked this off, our public hearings, and I like to, I think we've affectionately referred to it as our listening campaign. We kicked it off in the birthplace of the Republican Party, in Jackson, Michigan. Did you all know that? It's the birthplace? Yeah, all right. So we were, we were there, May 11th, and then we went to Kalamazoo, and we were in a hockey rink. We had a Jumbotron in front of us. And now we're here in Marquette. Oops, did I, did I skip one? Yes, okay. So and then what I want to, want you to see here in this, it says we're going to be back in Marquette, right? This is just the first round. We will have the, the end of this public hearing session will finish around June, and then in July, between July and August, we're going to be trying to draft these maps, and we'll be back in Marquette sometime after we get all the, all the information collated and sorted and synthesized, frankly, so we can create these draft maps, and we'll be back up in Marquette to present to you this three, the three maps. Again, drafts that you can comment on, and that's why it says first and second in Northern, Northern Michigan University. We only have May 18th because we don't know yet exactly when that, when we'll be here again. We just know that we're going to be in Marquette. And we're, yeah, who knows if I, I don't know if I told you, but I think it's going to be colder when we're back here. So then Thursday this week, we'll be in Gaylord, heading down to Northern Tip, Tip of Northern Michigan. And then we're going to be in Midland. Then we're in Lansing, and that's again where that first and second comes in, right? We're going to be there twice. We'll be in Flint, you know, twice. We'll be in Dearborn. We're in Novi, twice. We're going to be in Pontiac. We're going to be in Detroit, twice, and even a third time, right? We've got two, two locations there. But we'll be at the TCF Center, twice. And then we'll be in Port Huron and Warren. And then following the last, last two dates, last of June and the first of July, we'll be in Muskegon, Grand Rapids on the West Coast. So this criteria, we, we did have a presentation earlier, and we did talk about this criteria. Does anybody remember this criteria, or even remember if you worked on this? Have any ideas on like why this criteria is so important, and why we're even going over, going over and over and over it? Any thoughts on that? Go ahead, Jean. Well said, yeah. It does, it gives us a ranked order in what we, what we have to prescribe. And I think it's so, it feels like it's a really good container for us, because many of us, right, we all have our life experience, but we're like you all, right? We're citizens, right? We have just as much qualifications, I suppose, as you all. And we, we have a professional staff, and I think this is getting to the idea of a statistical and a data-driven approach. But we, we really will be ultimately using this criteria, right? And a lot of statistics and data and demographics and population, frankly, not to mention the rules, but these, these rules are the criteria. This is the, you know, the first, the first piece is the equal population. As you all suggested, right, it's going to be, it's going to be challenging to just draw it on long county lines, right, and get, get equal population. But we're, but we heard you, and we're going to do our darndest. Yeah. And then in addition to that equal population criteria, we need to comply with the Voting Rights Act, which is a, you know, I suppose, a technical, very technical specialty that some of us, right, are just getting used to. Some of us are just learning about. But we do have a candidate who, excuse me, not a candidate, but we do have a, have a staff and a professional staff who will help us with that consultant. So then we have the geographically contiguous communities of interest. I think we, many of you spoke very eloquently today, that communities of interest and what it means. And we, we have to, you know, I think, reflect on that as a Commission and try to understand it better ourselves. But we appreciate what you all give us and help us, yeah, take into consideration. But we have that as the third criteria, and frankly, the first state criteria. Then we have the four and five have to do with the political flavor of the, of the Commission and the, the criteria that we can't actually have any disadvantage or advantage to any political party or incumbent or elected office. So then six and seven, reflecting the consideration of county, city, and township boundaries. I hope you feel reflected there, that we, that's part of our criteria. And then finally, reasonably compact, and which is also something that I heard today, I think we all heard in, in this, some of the public comments. So in, in short, that is the, that is, those are the, the communities, excuse me, those are the, those are the criteria. And the, the ways to engage, I think I mentioned earlier that we'd like you all, this isn't the last time we'll be in Marquette. It is, when we come back, we'll have, we'll have draft maps. So we hope that between now and when we come back, that you all will engage with many of the other folks that you have in your communities and your families, and just get the word out that we want, we want this input, and we want, yeah, this, these are the ways to engage on the screen there. And I think that concludes my brief presentation. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, MC. I would like to now turn to Sue Hammersmith to provide acknowledgements.
Again, we want to thank everybody for making public comment. Thank the volunteers who came out tonight to help. We appreciate your involvement and your sharing your time with us this evening. And for anyone who wants to make additional public comments, we certainly invite you to do so, either at an upcoming meeting, at an upcoming public hearing, or on the website. We are looking for your input, and we appreciate all the people who've spoken this evening. And we're, we're very happy to, to be here and to take that input into consideration. So thank you again for being here, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Sue. At this point, we have concluded our business and our public comments. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn these proceedings.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Witches.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lutt. All in favor, please raise your hand, just so indicate. And all opposed, same sign. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at 8:02 PM. Thank you very much, excuse me, to everyone who provided comments. Excuse me, and thank you for attending.